So we are recording. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April Village Board Meeting. This evening, I would like you to commute if you would, and we can say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I'll try to share my screen here, see if I can, because I know Dean would like me to do this. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, and to the republic for which it sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, just for all. Little thrown, sorry, I got a little thrown when I was hearing rebound. I apologize. You know, this evening, before we get started with the regular meeting, we have a special guest with us tonight. It's our Justice James Green. He is here in my upper right-hand corner. He's here tonight to execute the Alt of Office for those of us who ran in the most recent election. So I congratulate everyone and thank you all for serving in your positions. Before we can get started with that, I have the honor of swearing in Judge Green before we start. So I would ask Judge Green to raise his right hand and repeat after me. I, James Green,
I, James Green,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice,
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being here. And now we're starting to get a round of applause.
Yeah, Zoom applause, right?
Trying to figure out how long you've been here. So it's kind of like this will be your second term and then a half, you did like a half a term.
Right. Yep, Jim Goan appointed me to fulfill an unexpired term, then I ran, so it got a little complicated. You add it all up, six years.
Okay.
So starting year seven now.
We are happy to have you again with us. Now it's your
Thank you, thank you. All right. Just the briefest of words. You know, when I start court here in the village, it's as humble as these public meetings are usually, right? We get a few people and obviously people are there because they've been accused of something. But in any event, I always say it doesn't look like a courtroom, and we're a very humble little village, but we like it that way. We're a little hokey sometimes. But, but it is a courtroom in the state of New York and under the state and the federal constitutions, and it has all the powers therein. It's the same thing with the village. We're a little humble, but that's okay. We have the power of the state of New York behind us through this constitution in the United States, and it's a great, great thing. So even though it's Zoom, and there's just a few of us, I think it's critically important. Thank you for having me, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Now, am I swearing you in, Carrie, tonight?
You are, actually. I forgot that I was on the agenda too.
Okay, well, by all means, I think by virtue of the office of Mayor-elect, we get to have you go first. So are you ready?
I am ready, whenever you want.
Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Carrie Denine.
I, Carrie Denine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Yep, Zoom clap. Now, is this your second or third term, or it's, I lose track because you were on the board and then you became
Second term.
Second term there. Congratulations to your reelection and to your budding dynasty as mayor of Altamont, New York. Right. And let's see, we have Michelle and John that stood for reelection, yes?
Not Michelle.
Not Michelle this time.
And John.
Who is it? No?
Tressa Matulowicz.
Yes, of course, thank you. And help me with your last name, Tressa Matulowicz.
Matulowicz.
Matulowicz. That's the syllable on them. Okay, Tressa, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay. So if you would raise your right hand. And Tressa, please repeat after me, please. I, Tressa Matulowicz.
I, Tressa Matulowicz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. You're now a sitting member of the Village Board. And thank you. I just love the Zoom clap. Congratulations, Tressa. It's a great, great position. All right, and we have John tonight, right?
That's correct.
All right, hi, John.
Hey, how you doing?
Good to see you. Are you ready to be sworn in?
Sounds good.
All right, raise your right hand. And repeat after
Oh, there it is.
Cover the camera. Oh, I see, because of the background.
Yeah, I can take that.
No, no, you don't have to, that's all right. So, so, repeat after me. I, John Scally.
I, John Scally.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Congratulations on your reelection. How many, how many terms is this for you, John?
This is my second term.
This is also your second term. Excellent. Well, congratulations, and I don't get to see all of you, especially during pandemics. I don't get to see you all the time. So again, thank you for having me, Carrie. I'm going to stay on the meeting if that's okay for a little bit. Okay?
Oh, thanks for coming. We really appreciate it. We weren't sure how we wanted to do this, and we figured this would still work. So I'm glad we made it, you know, happen.
Yeah, likewise. And thank you for all the work you do. It's sometimes thankless, sometimes you get a thank you. Allow me to thank you as a village resident, not as a village justice, as a village resident. Takes all of us to pitch in, and I really appreciate all of your hard work. Especially Nick. Hi, Nick.
Jim, I was gonna say, it's great to see you. I feel like I haven't seen you for two years.
It's been a while, Nick. It's been a while. Okay, I'll go on mute now. Thank you, everybody, and I'm gonna hang around for a little bit too.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so looking at our agenda. The next part of our agenda is our 2021 organizational meeting. Before I ask for a motion for the consideration, I just want to highlight a couple of things. This is, there are a lot of routine parts to this organizational meeting. Just some things I'll highlight, though. One-year term, you'll see, if you have the written materials in front of you, we have different liaisons. We've always had liaisons for different departments. The Police Department, the Fire Department, Planning and Zoning Board, things like that, Archives. And it wasn't maybe well-known. We're going to be, you know, putting this on our website. We are trying to expand our communication even more, and Ginger Hannah has been working really hard on organizing for us to all have village emails, which will be online. So if residents want to ask us a question directly, that they can email us on the website, and they'll also there, it'll be posted, like, what we are the liaisons for. So if they have something they may want to ask about the Police Department, maybe they'll email John. Or if they have something about, you know, building and zoning, or, you know, or planning board zoning, they'll maybe write Tressa an email, and then they can take it to whoever to get the answers, or maybe they'll know the answer themselves. So that will be done by the end of the month. They're already set up. We just gotta get the directions out to everybody about setting it up yourselves and things like that, you know, for your use, but that will be on the website by the end of April. So that's, that's something you'll see at the top of the page there. Going down to some planning and zoning board appointments. I do want to thank somebody who's not on here, which is John Hukey. John has been on the planning board for some, a term, I'm not sure if it's only a term or maybe a term and an appointment. I'm trying to remember back. But when he was asked if he'd like to continue on the planning board, he had to step down right now because he had other things going on, but he has served the planning board, you know, in a great, just done a great job, and I want to thank him for his efforts and the time that he's put in. He always was, you know, he read every little detail. He's that guy that really zoned in on everything. So we thank him, and I know Deb Heck said thank him at her meeting, but I just wanted us to thank him. But going forward or moving up into positions or extending into positions, Simon Litton is going to be moving up into, he was an alternate on the planning board. He is now going to be serving as a planning board member. Kate is going to continue on the zoning board. And Gary Goss, who was an alternate, will be moving up on the zoning board as well. So we want to thank all three of you for, again, your efforts and willingness to work with the village to help us on very important boards. And that was just something I wanted to point out. Let me, I have to let somebody in while we're doing this, sorry. There we go. That's a highlight. And then I'll just remind, I know, I think Kate's the only one who's here tonight, but Simon and Gary and Kate, one thing you'll have to do after this evening is just stop in to see Patty and sign the oath book. So just a reminder there. This also has our official newspaper. We have Eltima Enterprise and the Spotlight. Our banks haven't changed. There is going to be a slight modification of village hall office hours just for village business, but it's not a huge difference. So that's going to be posted. It's already on this. I think it's going to be on the website tomorrow. It's going to be at the door. That's on there. The meetings have not changed. The engineer list is consistent with what it was last year. And we are, our village council, we are going to continue our relationship with Young Summer and specifically Allison Phillips, who has done so much for us. So thank you for agreeing to stick with us. We're so happy to have you with us. And those are the highlights from the organizational meeting. I don't know if anybody has anything on that, if they have any questions to the board. But if not, I would say consider a resolution to adopt the proposed appointments, designation, schedules, personnel, and financial procedures contained within the organizational meeting agenda. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
John?
I'll second.
Second was, wait, was Michelle?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Nick, I beat him.
Got it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov.
Favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. I'm going to move down to staff reports this evening. We received written reports from Eltima Fire Department and Public Works. I think one thing I'll point out with the Public Works, because the questions have been out there in the community, is one thing is, has leaf and bag pickup started or sticks and things like that? They have started. Leaf, though, is, everything has to be bagged, and all the, you know, sticks have to be tied, just keep that in mind, but they have started that this spring. They put out a nixle about flushing of hydrants, and it told which areas, so people need to, you know, just beware of that as they're doing laundry and things like that. And then they are going to start working on the winter damage to the roads soon, in the next two weeks. And then we have a list of projects coming up, so that's what I wanted to mention there. And the only thing, I don't have details right now. I was going to write the board today, but I haven't done it yet. We've met with the camp director, the office staff, and myself. We will be having summer camp for kids this summer. We will be opening the pool, and the details to all that will be coming out shortly. We're working on the plan because, of course, we have to have a kind of a COVID action plan for the pool and for the camp and all that. So we're on that and looking to hire, you know, students, not just students, but teenagers and young adults for those positions that we have. So there's more to come, but just wanted to put that out there as a heads up. If you had a chance to review the Treasurers vouchers and the abstract for this month, I know we have all the signatures, so we're good on that. Could I have a motion to accept the abstract for the month?
So moved.
I was gonna say, I was gonna give that one to you next.
It's fine. I'm slow tonight.
John, Nick is second, and could I have roll call, please?
Trustee Matulowicz.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. The next thing I'm going to move to is the public comment for this evening. If anyone has a public comment or if they want to make to the board, or I would say if it's a budget comment, can you just wait until the public hearing on the budget, and we'll let you address the budget then? But if there's anything else, this would be a time to do it. Dean?
Yeah, I claimed that I was only here to see your flag and say the Pledge of Allegiance, but I do, I do two other quick things.
Sure.
One, I'm going through withdrawal. Kept wanting to make the motions, but I'm trying to be good. But more importantly, I just want to wish Tressa all the best and most success in having stepped up into a trusteeship. So I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank the all of you and also the village staff for all that they've done to help me out over the years.
Well, we appreciate all the work that you've done over the years. It was weird not having you sign vouchers tonight. We said that Dean's always the one that's right in there, so.
I did. I did on the back, so nobody was
Honestly, I'm a little worried. Like, do we have three signatures? Because I know Dean was always like number three.
You tonight.
No, I actually went over and did number three in Dean's honor. I did all of them today.
There you go.
Actually, the third thing I have to ask then, so I had, I said I had two things. I have three things. How much do we pay for sewage this month? That's what I
You know, I should have gotten the number just for you. I'll send it to you, though. Send you an email. Thanks, Dean. Anybody else? I'm gonna look around just to see if I see hands or don't see anybody? Okay. Well, if we don't have anybody else for public comment, Allison, can I ask you to read the legal notice to open up the public hearing for the budget?
Sure. Village of Altamont Board Meeting Notice of Organizational Meeting, Public Hearing, and Regular Meeting. Notice is hereby given that a meeting will be held by the Village of Altamont Board of Trustees on April 6, 2021, at 7:00 PM to conduct the annual organizational meeting, public hearing to consider 2021-2022 village budget before final adoption, along with regular village board business. The meeting will be held remotely as part of the Village of Altamont's COVID-19 response plan and can be accessed by the public using the following internet link or dial-in phone number. Topic: Village Board Meeting. Time: April 6, 2021, 7:00 PM Eastern Time. Internet link provided. Meeting ID: 867-80513956. A telephone number access is also provided. A copy of the Village Board Agenda and related materials will be available on the Village website at altamontvillage.org. Patty Blackwood, Village Clerk.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Before I ask if there's any comments from the public or any questions that they have, I'll just, again, I'll give some highlights. Board members, if I forget something or you want to add something else, please do, or Catherine, same thing. Just some highlights from, you know, all, we have, we're working on this since the end of February. We had started, we had three village budget workshops that were open to the public. They were held, again, in the same manner on Zoom. And, you know, the first one is basically our departments come in and do a presentation and what they're looking at for numbers and things they may need and why, projects coming up, et cetera. And then the second one, you know, Catherine takes those numbers, and we talk about it a bit, and she tries to work it in, and then we work in some other things to see where that leaves us overall. So after all that, I guess the biggest question that everybody wants to always know is about taxes. And with this draft budget that you're seeing, it reflects taxes staying flat. It does, one of the other highlights is there is a 2% cost of living increase reflected for our village staff who work very hard all year long. We try to do that as much as we can. And this year, we were able to do it. Our reserve funds, we are staying consistent with what we've put in them every year. We put things in reserve funds for vehicles for each department. We have rotations, you know, budget rotations worked out so they can buy, you know, equipment they need or trucks they need at a certain time every so many years, because we keep this kind of steady. And the other thing we try to do every, I'd say almost every budget season, or at least every other, so we kind of look at departments to make sure we're not falling behind, we're staying competitive. It's hard for a small place like Altamont. And when we examine, you know, to always keep up with the Gilderlands or the bigger towns when it comes to salary and hiring, you know, what we're hiring at and things like that. We felt that this year, Department of Public Works and senior drivers were the areas that we wanted to look at because we were falling behind in those two areas, which is really hard to recruit people to take those positions. And then the other thing is keep those folks. We don't want people coming in and not, you know, getting some experience with us, then going on to something bigger and better, because they can get paid better somewhere else. We'll never be top, but we wanted to make those adjustments, and we did this year. Money is always tight with us, but we felt like that was a priority, and so we did make adjustments in both those areas to kind of keep us competitive and, you know, to, we appreciate those people. We want them to stay with us, big picture. We want them, you know, stick around. So that was one of the highlights. Through all of this, I would say, you know, we did with our talks with Catherine, we do know, and I know that was printed, there were some, I think there might have been a story about it as well. Our sewer fund needs attention. We know that Nick was good enough to do, like, explore all the data for the last six years, trying to see why it seems like our revenues are falling short of our expenses and how come that is. And expenses have gone up. We're not going to lie, and a lot of big water users for our system have either gone off or gone way down, depending whether, you know, it was before COVID even, things like that started changing. So we have to deal with that, and we know that, you know, again, we kept taxes flat here, and we recognize that we are probably going to have to raise our debt service or some other way, raise revenue for the sewer fund this summer. We're going to have to have a public hearing and look at, you know, the scenarios around that. So that is something that came out of looking at this budget. We're not in trouble or anything like that, but it is an area that needs attention. So we're looking, again, down the road, future, because the plant that was supposed to save us some money, I think the wastewater plant, has been a little more expensive than we anticipated. So that, and then coupled with expenses going higher, we have to figure that out. And it's not, it's not an easy thing to do, but we started working on that. So more to come with that. Let me look here. Did I miss anything, you know, either Catherine or board that I want to highlight, that what we talked about in the budget? Anybody?
I mean, I normally have something I want to say, but I think you captured it perfectly. Everything that we've added or tried to develop in the budget and also the challenges that we have to deal with in the next couple of months.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always tricky with Altamont. We don't have thousands here and thousands there to give a lot more. We're pretty consistent and always, I think we try really hard to, you know, get the most out of our money. So I think, again, we had a lot of long discussions on this one, so I think that's, that's a good thing. You know. Catherine, are you good? I think I muted you earlier, so in case you see.
I'm fine. I think you did a very good job explaining it.
Okay, great.
I don't have anything to add, really.
All right, with that said, I will open it up to the public now, because it is a hearing. So I don't know if anybody has anything that they viewed it, that they wanted to say or had a question. Oh, Kate, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for that great summary. I was able to sit in on some of the workshops. And I appreciate the time and energy that it takes to work on that budget. And I especially, again, want to support the colis for staff and the discussion that you had and the work you did to make salaries competitive for our Department of Public Works folks and the senior drivers. I know that that is something that had come up, especially for the Department of Public Works folks a couple of years ago, that if we weren't raising those salaries, we'd be spending money for training them, and then they'd be taking that training elsewhere. So I really support that. I also was happy to hear, you know, there's more discussion going on about the sewer funds needing attention. I was able to see that and see the spreadsheets that you had for that. The one question that I had is, there was discussion in the workshops, and I think it was two years ago about that, the whole project to back up our water supply by hooking into the town of Gilderlin, and I wonder where you landed on that. Thanks.
Sure. We, that is still a want and I believe a need for the Village of Altamont. At the time, the cost was, it came out to be more than we had anticipated. So we put the work that we had already done, which will be useful again. And we are talking about ways to put aside fundings for that. We have not put anything separate right now, but our water fund is in very good shape. We have some big projects coming, but we will look at that. That'll be assisting us down the road. And then it's going to be something we have to work on for a grant, but we have to get a little more of a buffer to even be able to do the project. So it's, it's table. We need it.
Yeah, thanks. I think we need that too, especially with, you know, what was said in the budget workshops, you know, when Jeff Mueller was talking about the time that we're pretty close to having an emergency. And also because I just don't think that we can, we can discount that we're, you know, there are more climate emergencies that that happen, and it would be just better to be prepared for that than to be caught off guard. So thanks. Thanks for all that work.
Yeah. Anybody else that I'm I don't see anybody. I only have one page. I don't see any more hands. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Yeah.
Michelle, can you be second?
Yep.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz.
Favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. I'm going to move on to item number two on the agenda, which is consider approving 2021-22 village budget. Could I have a motion?
I'm off.
Oh, Tressa, thank you. I'm looking around at my screen here. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle, and roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item three, consider approval of standard workday resolution of six hours per day for village clerk, court clerk, administrative assistant, historian, office cleaner, and Parks Department for New York, sorry, and Parks Department for New York State Retirement System for reporting purposes. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
John, in second.
I'll second.
Tressa, and roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
Favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. One more of these. Here we go. Item number five, consider approval of standard workday resolution of eight hours per day for Department of Public Works and Police Department for New York State Retirement for reporting purposes. Did I skip one?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
Okay. You're allowed to approve that one and go back to the other one? Let me go in order.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, let's have a motion for number five, since I just
I was waiting for Nick.
I know. I'm all confused now. I don't know what's going on. What are we on?
Do not make me come back there.
Sorry.
Round four?
Five.
Round five.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Nick, Michelle, can you be second?
I'd be second, yep.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
Favor. Now I'm going to back up to item number four. They all say the same thing. You can imagine. Consider approval of standard workday resolution of six hours per day for mayor, trustees, and justices for New York State Retirement. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Nick, and roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
Favor.
Mayor Denine.
Favor. Okay, now I'm jumping down a little to item number six on the agenda. Okay, now I'm jumping down a little to item number six on the agenda. Consider approval of 2020 firefighter service award credit listing for recommendation of Kyle Haynes chief. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
And Nick is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Item seven, consider resignation of Susan Sanders Gardner effective March 3, 2021. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Tressa, and roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
Favor. And I should've said this beforehand. I'm gonna really miss, uh, Sue Sanders, one of our, one of our two gardeners. Um, unfortunately, she moved. Um, so she is no longer in the area and, uh, she was a master gardener and just wonderful at the job. So we have an ad out, if you know anybody looking for that summer seasonal position, um, please apply at the village office. Um, I'm gonna move on to item eight, consider approval of minutes, or board minutes for February 24th and March 2nd, 2021. Um, and could I have a motion?
So moved.
Nick is first. And second is?
I'll second it.
No, I'll second it. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Um, and before I get to item number nine, did anybody else on the board have anything they wanted to discuss this evening? Are you good? No? Not seeing any heads. Tressa, congratulations again. Welcome. Nice to have you. It's usually not this, uh, it's a little smoother normally, but we're having some technical issues lately.
Really?
It'll be nice to get back in person at some point in time. Um, and I don't know if she's still here, but Kate, thank you once again for extending your position on the zoning board, because I see that you're here. Thank you. And, and I think that's it for tonight. So I'm gonna go to item number nine. Consider motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Tressa, and second? And Nick, wait, gotta say it, Nick. You're muted.
I second.
And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
Favor. I hope everyone has a wonderful, uh, week. It looks like great weather. Enjoy. Dean, I'm sure we're gonna be talking soon about, oh, something you can help us with. And have a great night, everybody.
They're on.
Bye.
Night.